Presidente Senator Lencer Basilius Oi Senator Cecil Edvel Oi Senator Ubay Gikwe Nabo
Oi
Senator Prime Mlayrei Oi Senator Sikfit Bayna Amura Oi Senator Ennati Pedro
Oi, Nattian
Senator Tichey Imrul Mongsaaw Oi Senator Marko Eblaurudim Oi Senator Vasugi El Tapsunino Oi Senator Andrew Tabelwal Oi Senator Salvador Sadoy Talams Oi Senator Mason Hiraevang Alwips Floridere Gray Mariur Oi Vice President Stevenson Jake Cuarte Oi Presidento Conz Pobles Oi Mr. President Maria Kwarum
Maria Kwarum, a Senator Hiraevang La Excuse, bodontira Senator Mariur ma bolongotigai virgide raukele, Senator Mariur.
Oise maluilitasilsel mega presidente malvekla Senator Sido Lvolma. Dugora Iron Four ingarinyaa Jornal ingarinyi mahmumadofa adaptara First Day Journal rathur da special session.
Si damosion namdune esegno tirger roguil gongeldu oi. Boom Tok Amuaisi Floridere
Talvolma Iron Five ma tarvekla adonhotai gel gamni sununa a presidential may ma niha seal Prescom 12-35 a Prescom 12-36 Prescom 12-37 ma 12-38, 12-39 a 12-9 Eh, talvolma ra gel Iron Six ra report ma Communication Departmenta sel may ndiak omanisel imo departmental Communication 12-9, tia nga sel mega presidential presidency naksua anuar report Dugora Iron Seven, ndiaga nga Iron Seven Iron Eight ra reporta standing committee a fundo boshadronktira viceesse presidente ma spurbredita reporta.
Shor tuixes Utel golar session ergidel mora order Floridere
Vice Presidente, godaga Iron Eight etistai mahmumadofa adaptara standing committee report 12-42 la house bill 12-23-3H2 tia nga fiscal year 2026 unified budget.
Si damosion namdune esegno odopsate lela chairman na committee, Senator Rudim, kol muski da report, Senator Rudim.
Amsulange Mr. Presidente, maluilitasilsel mega oma vekla tia nga sense standing committee report 12-42 mongsaaw da house bill number 12-23-3H2. Mr. Presidente ya mongsaaw da sel de unified budget FY26 ilawdaras la taqal Presidente Suranga Alwips mega igal both houses ma house agit mukta raugele de gugodar sinmei ya bo momes raugele la house e Mr. Presidente kmedu dimosi xirium sel de gugodri da daitorio ndaninyaa mrasal amenmensa da arni. Akamitriga Mr. Presidente la awin senmin samlo mesekte raugeol e bo remese se projection na Presidente ngarya reservation sel girel tenganya information akamitriga wa olenit rasilbo luguil bodanga roguil ma doe saro guin ma bo doel inform da mega decision gira le yo sang la raugele rau. Ki damutanyaa Mr. Presidente ta sing blangan kampat, otigunisa eknaudaw yemlanga pichi esti, direk lorginga udawda la kavelmenta. Mr. Sen momes egel udawda lorginga raugeelaw, olgi uligiwa kampat e uligiwa pichi esti. Ma udawda sumu lorginga mlaramri genmei, ma mlarambo kastingerada raublu ma obsa lela wai. Egi kidat tobulange Mr. Presidente tamilgu kiya yo sa obsa lela wai, ikada momblu raugele gaidla appropriations. Tial yo sang Mr. Presidente, awel momogugu muaiseya ngarya RPL 11-40 lo mogugu wa la salarida kavelmenta, la triel basent isegidla uwe Mr. Presidente, adi isegida uwa ngar 80 million raugele budget ya ures tawa boel madegna. Sel bo momes esel president na ngaya blel projecta, mlanga lo aset tia nga amorbaka agalgeringa raublu rau ma uelma kertmokla viceesse tetelen. Iga mitriga Mr. Presidente, guk omes inga segel ambebo da tergibal gerget, bo dolga biti tia nga tribo longa tii isegidla projection edo mesas edo pasel tial tergibal lower da projection ergid bo sbeel musatele la akamitriga oma vekla ader tial blay, bo la ader du til ma ader la executive e bo lgaodin kmasengera ma ligel essential services, sbeel domes se prioritized e ma li maqretel budget raublu rau. Di ose Mr. Presidente akamitiri port, tumblagataqta mukmou Ngarinyaa reservation raugele projected growth eh sel dorengs ra ader raublu, eda ader lea dorengs wai dimlakam drengsi ader mel oye ngara, si maluwinga raugutogol mra. Ra ader Mr. Presidente, mniya dimel aortakantela ndilo asin, tigunisa taal masari alalakla lo ma gal ma tiritel lo obsa obsimela ader amokla. Ma la ader shiobal mehngito asin, yonngito dimel ader la kavelmenta, mblu lalda dugora adi mblu lalda nomokprado akuglida ba asiobartil ma tiritel ader amakli. Mr. Presidente a tia ga ma li gamanga report, direk mor dimokla bebir a policies luyisel babringa la Presidente, guk mlengukulsi ba bebir a policies ma mle moktega la akamitiriga, asin, edo aigal guk wado mdas, eseng muktu tuteler la algire da moswada leaderstiba raublu, momora tebr, msesu mukdukmo abangid ma ader la house ma Presidente ya gi kidalwa l'ortshentl uttogo agiril mora teble, kadasma wado roguil, ma la ader wai rogamomu madenge temblu riregi da sorbertil, mgiel madenge galto Mdas ya Mr. Presidente, vekla ader mudanik tial togoro ul budur nyenge tila da itang erol 80 million ndigadere a gamodeitra ader urer isegidla triel basent yengarinyaa mondakma se tia ngare do nyenge til bo la ga provide the services di sel akamitiya Mr. Presidente, daal lo mesase, wo lemesase ni di ba da take care al ader go ndaagat sal malu madangala tiritel la kavelmenta, se wangara oritel elale ndiaga audit report tial blu. Egi da oshpessen independent audit report, lo ngasiya singa tial le omi nitela udaw duwai yengarinyaa bebir informational gibla amrisive Mr. Presidente mo awanai ma lo ben uge la mutl bebir ager gira le yo sang raublu rau. Ngarinyaa udawda momoi trage modikmosetengila ager, e ma lo momoi trame motmokla bebir raugeol, di daal lalda daal resource of funding. Mong di gi kidat tang nyarulto wai Mr. Presidente sumo awanai, ma lo madegna kimues ya akamitriga wale komenda, se ga wop tergibal soroba, bo momil musate yangalen tia nga tia togo l'wai, utto kiya ader raublu. Ya ngarele de Mr. Presidente, momo taqleka roo bo sbeel mengi tial sesel resources ul doga, ma mora vekla ad bo sel equitable distribution, ma la base ra needs ma sel equitable distribution ra ne so watavasul, lo mblusera aigal kukte al sbeel malu ngasela al ader blu. Direk ngarinyaa awdaras mul ngasela al ader blu Presidente, lo giwala la bengi maran si Mr. Presidente uktio mesase, ambe uktu kaya sa bebir a taksira la ad. Eh sel mondal mea asin, remildung ra hearinga Mr. Presidente lo bluktaq, asin, omisin da la galda do risive a importa aigal galda mer al ader da ga sirsi, butokla al ader da ga sirsi, ma butoka al da ga da ga basho raublu swedimbo toga da dolmea bras, toga dolmea gukhaun, dolmea gageendu bra bo lguku. Ma la ado uttuire igal stovam, ma igan digal galda bla bol taksa, direk mla momokprado ra ader igal da lo amokla. Mong sel remildung orsel, aset ado guk kaya sa igal bebir udaw, duksa ader guk ketel ader amakli. Momes etega mitiri port de Mr. Presidente, eng watch split la legma butogol issue, ngarinyaa reservation ra ado guk adat partet tial ul dasu mola, ma guk ngarya soril, ma ule momonya reservation, mong mdas, e mal diu gine Presidente kadan ka wosalda swed, ding moktega yidha sorad meksho, ndaagat stovam kavelmenta. Di aktrek lo mesas ele signature report de Mr. Presidente, direk lorginga trase divortetela raugeol sel sumu omsana akamitiri port, ngarinyasa signature pages e bo multira krau rule six krau rule sertial blay yengarinyaa fa blagataq, sel sumu ndakam gange tial raugeol yengarinyaa blagataq, togo l gira mluusila se ay do not can call ndaagbo momola angod, toga ra sertial wabi ed, tia togo l wai yengarinyaa lutkiya blay, we have to abide by the rules. Mong ndagwo lo, ndagdo lo, akte Mr. Presidente, di gundas, mluwil botgol yar a protogol tial blay, ma la ado giwala eda mey, bo lurti ra, bo nyega omul tial blu. Ya Mr. Presidente, sel di isegida ri port, me tia dega mey ongedela momi well ya akmaro l'ngitra vekla ado asin, meda mi mokla adu lo se tia nga ketel di di bo do blagatakl Mr. Presidente, blu raugele daal print awdow tial ul momes ringa berroso ya gadho opra, sel sbeel golgar ngira tarakla se mong direk sbeel asin, ngarinyaa momondakma se, a tia nga daal inafel lo mluutu kavelmenta, ma la mel bigosa ngalal badam motmokla. Agi da malu ngin madenyaa Mr. Presidente, di tia omre lengmola ma bo lalda, ndaal mal ra la ngalda yengarinyaa direk sección ra la mechanisms, sel sumu mori anson se sebu zoi su la aigal gi da le supplemental budget, sebu impound afanda, sebu priorities allocations ema kyi tial blu, emla talaj apen, ogi al olbi la blu lamle waise. Mong gi da ga gyu do kertiang, taal bakte tial blu Mr. Presidente, baige kurba, sbeel roj se ra al ader tial blu. Mong isegida Mr. Presidente, tia nga tali bil mo wa la controversial budget, and I think it should be expected e man magat tal da ga oversight, da ga audit da ga wutla, ndinga ader bloso yegablmenta tiritel ngwara ma te ulmo do mblu ngil waise, asin, ba ambebo sel akot lo meeting, gada mla ka odin, asin, gado ngil ting ndaagadu vesai gal lo ulmo blagatakl msesepaset tia bo nyega akamitriga, bo rule ager lela oversight ya igal gage counterpart setel executive, e bo det, asin, tial kavelmenta gida, rimurtabu do lge ngarama ngarinyaa bebir a togo l motmokla, daagat tal gida madenge ngarama nyega udawda toba, daagat tal gida madenge ngarama audit da daal motmokla ngarama nyega ontide l'orada se gabum investigation, tadi muge daal hensirgi. Isegida tonut tial report de Mr. Presidente, mal daal not with disrespect anybody tia nga de la ultra, o ulmo tietela, raugeol asin, bo momui ba tia fal blagatakl buto toga ra togo tial bulu, ager gida ader kavelmenta, gokda ngarwaba al ader togo kertiang, toga ra igan toga ra eksekutiva daal do din ma ulmo do mluut tial budget, mor se isegida, muski da, di gi da muski da temel ma te al, momu musate eksekutiva asin a eksekutiva gira lo tautra la ndaagani di l'udawda todrab, wai ya na lo tiraqra la, lo giwala butume la ma guli truyuda se kabod ngil musate tia eda ga gyu da ngarwaba kavelmenta, di omro, se wutla, bo mesesel lo ngargel, ma l'udawta besa akra ader, sel gal kamgal motmokla igal mgiel da shiowai, mluuklo ngargel lo mluutu kavelmenta, mora al ader raublu tia nga sa iko, ndagdi lo mokpita ya obort tial ilkomitiri port, kada molongi sel tarah aledi tia raublu raugeelaw, asin, ndagdi lo mgoro ulta kavelmenta, mo awalu, uli motmal ra ader raublu egadu tamako soxel imo l'blu. Di isegida Mr. Presidente, ulit, mot open raual, egadu ulu rau, ma rega sular vekla aigal udu shwir ma temel, ma kantribution sel tinwet tia ya mal, di besa kumye Mr. Presidente, ndaagakumbrana, asin, ndaagadu ngarke sol omes na raublu motmal ma lo wala lo mseu ra da ader raublu raugeelaw, moktani te a te al, mot open raual, war vekla adu, bo l'uklo al du shwir ma atengi tial ul dasu mola. Shula Mr. President.
Shula Senator Rudim, Chairman Mong elanga, poskamete, liu, mong ngarinyaa ader sol mokku sese, e holdu sese l'gire tial niha unified budget, l'gire la 2026. Senator Aldwean
Shula, tiala Presidente shula da ngara akamitiri port ma kora salkdimo mega kamenta yid tial akamitiri port eh Presidente ya mal gamata ri port 46 46 pages kora ruet, asen, boshadla chairman, kora highlight tia gel gora mle important
Boom Kaadi make you stop Alwa mle opa onse devision
We were hoping President, boshadla Chairman, kora kataqta tia gel gora, ma totutel aspecta tial ri port, especially tial el gora tial bill niha FY26 budget di instead of by kora ah amlo alpa debate, l'gire la igal signature ergidel ngarya reservation ni ma di, kubat tial tiala Presidente di iguaisikmasengaka, mle sanitary report lo with reservation not becauseing a disagree ra ah budget kabumraq, naseng ngire da modru tial process edo tutmokla budget, mo boshadla make sure a comes October 1st a kavelmenta, daal ma simre, mlemol, mlangarinyaa operational pa budget, mo solisa para next fiscal year. Sek totutel, Presidente, yid mo mainfuru ngi a arugul ader ol bill ma opa isegida kora a spirit ra, nasen boshadla la taqal da swede, da opi iya budget el malakal bol matrova kavelmenta eh, ma unakmesana budget tial ri port, ding narige reservation, ma ngama guli ta tiala Presidente, masegal di isma da aigal l'wal basis ra reservation na ga gire tial ri port. Agote Presidente, tial ri port aigal first almost half tial ri port, boshadha o algora concern ma reservation ra Chairman al due to the lack of time ma lack of information, ngarinyaa adimlakal, sal available na mega committee mong base a gi gi de Presidente o algora, doa blaga first ourself to wa bola kado umbrangar sel FAL Presidente, mle submitri, l'ugio aigal o projection ra executive branch and then because a gi gi da l'wal kora, amle basis tial nasen kadalaka, mlelaka information, malak of time ah, akumnasak disagree ra Chairman, l'gire la awaisi gi da cook da swede, nasen we lack the time, and not mokka tial budget eti a ringilu tial budget, taringilu siya July, beginning of July eh, edo mla ka a stover gi da start la ura budget, ra isegida, ado kotl risive tia gi da proposa Presidente since July, mle mutrela ah, lack of information, el point out rania Chairman na ah, maybe ngarinyaa temel maluusila ma executive branch especially Ministry of Finance instead of amillingil, mal mo o da ga mo el al September, da ga communicate a request ergida information el amnesepel, di mamadali da requesta igal information, leng igal information, el point out Chairman, akumnaswen they're all available, Ministry of Finance, ma igal vehicle department, kavelmenta el lo giwala, ngiril provide a gi gi da al performance reporta ti ra vekal temel a budget. Abai gisang al, by diregal blerla ngi, laging ngi ah, katablelaka collaboration we lack the collaboration, lowrela bang lobantria members a committee ergid we lack the collaboration, lobangela counterpart ergid ra House of delegates and we lack the collaboration, lobangela aigal appropriate agency ra executive branch eng boshadla, la communicate, aigal nganiil concern ergid mong with that collaboration, akumraq, nasel gumamla ngi eng boshadla, by nomere adalgut makli tial budget al moreflecta, o singira, ra vekla ad ra membersa Senate tiri al guk kalik, sel bitang, eng boshadla guk kotra kliya sel domnaswen mo o boshadla, nabigay taringira aigal tablol blay, ma obisa Presidente, mo o magat mokta tial ul dasu mola. Egi gi de Presidente, ora basis ra klabre a amle reservation na ga tial ri port omes mal betoka aigal gora guk timleu da swela Chairman, ding lil a tial ri port, di tial ri port, amor ri port ergida vekla, da mor ri port tial akamitiro gi sel botola sainga ergida ata ri port da da necesseli, ga dalruia aigal guk assessment, ma lo ben analysis ra Chairman eh, isegida moru lid, ma gada mo lo malai gi gi da l'wal reservation, ser lobangela signature ergid. Ya nga ka malumraq, nasen au lela, al adu tial budget, eh Presidente, gada diregal o ado kora amlegimir au lel nasen aigal gora majoril policy, al set tial budget, bo do diyaktla, mo o ho do mesra ilekta time eh, and di aigal l'wal del final recommendation na Chairman, na ngarinyaa aigal policy, guk tulsi aigal guk toba da house mong ah, sel bo waise gi de, Mr. Presidente, koto kamo o koto kamo feelik, nasen isegida, lack of collaboration, lobangela committee, among the committee members eh, edo mo enapel wa bo da idara akakarousul ul dasu, la ngal uttura al set tial ri port eh, edo mla malte el dira vekta members, wa do toba da ah, da swede, l'gire la eh, after all, akumnasasel gole ergida, vekla aga sorad rau li rau al sel de pasar ngira, arangalela Senate el bo ra House of delegates and sel guk ngarinyaa kora sam assurance ergid, et masel bonge eng boshadla, mokonge ngia house, males, ngarinyaa guk utangela house, e bo at least el minimal, e bo sel manage a gi gi da differences ergid eda bo sel time leave, da paset tial budget, mo o ma obisa Presidente. Agi gi de Presidente, in general, eng basis ra reservation na eh, nga ka mal, mlemol, mlo brak, nasen alakada thumb up with ah ora level ra FAL, gida roguil ngara Senate ah, boshadla lo terwakla osenge da l'girel, eh, o terlo klik, nasen isegida bo gora mo posisio ergid ek mumbringa ngaksel, dadula sen yid mo wa da kora amal mo conservative eh, bo ignore aigal oredinga ngil la el mia gida da fun, especially tial guk 10% el increase mora ah, ngara olo rau kavelmenta, increase rau kavelmenta aigal guk ni da ra executive branch, l'girela aigal guk program ah, project, tira malatka el mo motmokla el mo melisi aurerela, kora ah, delivery resivis na executive branch. Egi de Presidente, akumraq, nasen kora basis ra reservation ergid and di ultimately, akumraq, nasen diregal yid guk mo iwat, la gi gi da bebir a concern ergid eh, gi da amerik tial budget, mral nga ka di, kuigal reservation na and di, mo kongel, di ma mengialuk amerik tial ri port, mo mral eh, boshadla guk mo imul mra next partet tial legal, mo boshadwa taringira, asen uiding, ma adu del final Gi de Presidente, kaadi general kanson na ke, shula tiala.
Shula Senator Aldwean, Maria Ngota, Senator Rudim.
Mr. President, walusawle, prema shulela atrakol Senator Cecil Edvel ra aigal kamente, ngi Mr. Presidente, andik mal dori tra point of order ra tiala akamitiri port, boshadha awdaras, ul girela togo ra agai sai ma toga tretan, mluwil motmokla sel bukengsaal da du, Mr. Presidente, abai klow, mongsaaw da l'gire, komo da swede di sel bo momes tial ri port, Mr. Presidente, ma blagatakl, dimlakal duwa se in my personal opinion mldaswul tiro, du l'uttuira wabi ed, na office of Presidente, mle ndirek ngarinyaa informational gimginal, banlo meu, office of Presidente, submit ma lo ben ngitra, sel sumu, mongsaaw da moswada tietela raugeol, eda mo saaw da process, eda gada mlangi roguil mlangi tial swede, kasi gabo ma bebir di understanding ergida asen ma blorbeo de executive branch, tia gi da Mr. Presidente, awan bo momes sa ime ra gumi ra altutau, aklo du ergida, mle ime ra performance report ra Ministry of Education ra altutau se atala mal prime example, asin, la ul mal momeu da obrila la akamitir, mlangi ader ngarinyaa ontrid, edo mla kala ngai se maklowa a impacti Mr. Presidente, morte, ngara adu go, ngora toga ra gaisai, leklo wa isiur ngi se di sest, just one of many maktoni tra point of origin, Mr. Presidente, asin kabort tial ader la ri port, boptegra sumu ngarinyaa personal ena pinanaga ngasil e move strike ngi, ma lo ben moa tial du shwira, se ngalau l'wai se Shula Mr. President.
Senator Talams
Shula Mr. Presidente, tial tiala mo kamenta tial akamitiri port mrengasulela a Chairman, waise mensen no savel tevulitele eh, akamitiri port, l'ila udawda tial budget ra 2026 mriya reservation na ke, Mr. Presidente iwanagirela akamitiri port mwanagirela budget, tiro, e girela palahousi mrengasulela Chairman, mlaswel, lo aigal over 900 million, 900,000 o wago pegi l'application palahousin, andersel megalon mong boshadla palahousin lospe aigal pe mintraalon, magantilion kibau talon, inotigera mal uspe enlaga foro glurel, plasi atsumu, gada mo uspe da 24 million dalersel el pebel sel ablu raugeelaw, el a year da 2026 ngarama ndiatsa veden wa at least 1 million, usu tia ader raugeelaw el girela a house singa mal talarap raisis ngire la el tadaw ul edo betoga ader raugeelaw, natu de raugeelaw edo mgegerela di mora blu ramri gen, edo mla arbedim, ma bedim mora blu ramri gen losi ga uil dilat ma uil tial Egi gi de Mr. Presidente mle tadaw ul yengarinyaa reservation na ke, gire tial na akamitiri port akti regel, mle question aigal question, edo mla akamitiri port aigal mle menciona akamitiri port, l'girela aigal tun el FEE blechamita Presidente el mel isegida after awuli edo mletsa veden a Chairman lospe sel FEE ra Presidente, ru lik tial balsete mo balans ya unra plasen nesvela ngarinyaa tial esveden nomkadongra a Ministry of Finance e margoe setela, aigal differences ergid, l'giret se FEE n'savee duhliya a balansel budget, lu si ulgiwa mral FEE gida amogoni komyer ngi tia Senate ma house of dinner le mogiwa a exercise da l'odudu sera pa du ru ngisel supplemental budget akne begi kethnu ge, ma house amurnyat klow impasar gi da tia gi bo l'utmokla la budget ra 2026. Ki degun umes tial budget, Mr. President el uspe aigal unexpended budget ra 2025 el balansel budget, mong boshadla el agamodeita aigal 70% el increase l'gire mo effective la October 1st ya unra plasen ne gire lospe sel FEE kilo duvis na Presidente, eda gal gire duh Eh, mo, increase, ah, budget, eh, agid, eh, twenty twenty six. De, ader, bela, lospe, eh. And the and diregal, gamitir report, eh, mister president, ah, ah, mention, eh, ala, ah. Ah, odit, ra, gal, namo, mure, kler. Eh, aigil, diregal, eh, tuntir, taal, bera, senet. Ra, gal, namo, mure, kler, na, gire, eh, mal, eh, me, xiure, to, gotmo. And gal, savela, eh, ngani, auriel, gire, eh, la, budget, eh, du, ne, mra, a years, eh, years, eh, ah, a love, eh, for, odit. Eh, agid eh, a be, be, eh, aigil, reservation, ah, ke, gire, taal. Gamitir report, ma, budget. Adu, mister president, eh, lo, eh. And mention, eh, sel, C A O, office, eh, kun, gire, eh. Eh, fand, eh, mo, eliminate, eh, ga, agid. Differences, agid, ma, ader, bela, mo, de, ah, best, eh, tira. La, se, tom, de, eh, me, ra, ah, tisi, eh, dam, aigil, to, go, eh. Gire, eh, Ministry, eh, agid, eh, confidence, eh, normal, what, eh, agid, eh, to, go, eh. Mo, ma, aigil, eh, consequences, eh, dis, senet, eh. Gire, eh, open, lima, eh, do, mis, auriel, eh, kler, taqler. Eh, agid eh, aigil, goa, amne, eh. And, ah, reservation, ah, ke, mister president, eh, taal. Eh, gamitir report, ma, budget. Eh, na, ah, de, omerak, kun, gire, eh, lospe, eh, ah. Ah, government, eh, gire, eh, mo, de, ah, savela, eh, gre, eh, ah, budget, eh, twenty twenty six. Eh, ma, dimre, la, sa, proceed, eh, mo, oh, eh, the, eh, tis, eh, year, eh, twenty twenty five. And me, gire, eh, mister president, eh, man, su la. Su la, eh, senator, eh, El Lamson. Senator, Inavo.
Um, president, um, su la. Ah, tal, eh, la, go, gamet, eh, tal, budget, eh, eh, akmal, la, pal, la, say, sel, mora, au, lule, tal, blay. El, dimla, konge, eh, el sign, eh, tal, gamitir report. Eh, ak, so, eh, mo, sma, aigil, uli, eh, dyak, saing, eh, tal, eh, gamitir report. Eh eh, akmal, mereng, ah, su la, eh, chairman, eh, ah, aurere, eh, tal, eh, 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 budget. And ding, ak, tira, mal, akna, le, sel, ah, sing. Mering, ah, la, do, rura, budget, eh, la, ah, Ministry of Finance. Ling, dyaka, ah, da, eh, aigil, da, ka, rose, eh, bureaus, eh, al, sel, ah, Ministry of Finance. Ah, a, gis, aylos. Ak, guk, ah, da, nga, eh, sel, bureau, eh, ni, eh, guk, marula, eh, guk, di, nga, al, here, masel, obom, mes, eh, tal, ar, ngalela. A geisai, eh, rablu, re, bela, eh, ngi, eh, dal, mo. Oh, ultuira, ah, ah, del, ble, eh, the, confirm, eh, ngi, taal, blay, eh, dudungela, sing, qualified, eh, eh, gut, ma, kli, eh, economic, eh, projection, eh, agid. As, eh, edel, question, eh, ngi, sma, di, eh, kadu, mo, oh, blakataq, le, ngi, la, ar, mu, dal, eh, girel. Ma, uh, president, eh, ti, da, a, eh, ti, da, reservation, ah, ngak, sel, page, three. Eh, gamitir report. El, eh, ngari, sel, eh, ngati, eh, gamitir report. Eh, sel, third paragraph, eh, was, eh, and the whole. Your committee believes that the president's fiscal year twenty twenty six estimate of local revenues of eighty eight million, eight hundred fifty three thousand. It's, is too optimistic. Eh, ek mul, ah, say. Ah, al, al, ultuira, ah, Q three, third quarter financial report, eh, calculate eh, ah, a year end collection, eh, F Y, twenty twenty five, eh, likely likely seventy six million, nine hundred fifty four thousand. Ek mul, ah, say, and the next line, eh, say, president. Eh, was, eh, ah, gamitir, ah, wa, amlo oh, turu, eh, aigil, beq, eh, revenue items. Eh, me, apply, eh, sel, growth rate, eh, A D B, projection. Eh, ah, palahous, eh, G D P, economic growth, eh, twenty twenty six, eh, four point, eh, five percent. Eh, eh, oba, ta, agid, eh, eh, gamitir, ah, amle. At just now, committee believes, local revenue in F Y, twenty twenty six, will be eighty million, four hundred seventeen. Mang, a difference, eh, mister president, eh, eight million, four hundred thousand. Ma, away, sa, means, gamitir, taal, blay, eh, de, ah, lo, merang, eh, sel, projection, eh, president, eh, ngara, F A A, eh, revenue. Mang um, mul, ah, say, ndi, ah, lo, merang, eh, eighty eight point eight million. Ngou, merang, eh, was, eh, girel, di, eighty million four hundred seventeen thousand. Mang, say, agid, eh say, agid, eh, difference, eh, tal, revenue, eh, president, am, ral, de, ah, mral, de, ah, omerang, eh. Le, ak, tim, me, apply, eh, a simple, eh, calculation. Sel, domes, eh, sel, third quarter, eh, financial report, eh, ablu, re, la, eh, ble, sa, meet, eh, ngi, eh, ah, finance, eh, me, tal, ol, bi, eh, kal, ulau. Eh, sel, third quarter, eh, collection, eh, revenue, eh, ablu, re, la, eh, ah, sixty three million, nine hundred twenty four thousand. Say, agid, eh, sixty three million, nine hundred twenty four thousand, eh, collection, eh, ah, three quarters. Mo, um, di, by, dar, ngi, eh, tri. Eh, sub- edel, was, eh, al, sal, ki, kare, eh, ah. Our revenue collection, eh, ah, au, ngi, wa, quarter, eh, mo, twenty one million, three hundred eight thousand. Ma, ah, do, do, kers, eh, agid, eh, quarter four, eh, morsel, actual collection, two, quarter three. Eh, ah, F Y, twenty twenty five, eh, revenue projection, as, eh, edel, ah, say, nga, eh, eighty five million, two hundred thirty two thousand. President, om, edra, four point, eh, five percent, eh, morsel, eighty five thousand. Eh, three point, eh, eight million. Eh, eh, sub- edel, was, eh, estimate, eh, revenue, eh, F Y, twenty twenty six, al, sal, ki, kare, eh, eighty nine million, sixty seven thousand. Mang, ti, am, mal, me, eh, the, lo, ur, eh, morsel, projection, eh, ah, executive runs, eh, total revenue, eh, eighty eight million, eight hun, eight hundred fifty three thousand. Sen, ta, kan, pera, sel, oh, ur, eh, morsel, revenue, eh, gamitir, away, sa, means, ah, mul, ah, say, eh, di, eighty million, four hundred seventeen thousand. Eh, kadu, mang, eh, adu, eh, ah, eight million, four hundred thirty six thousand, eh, president, eh, gire, eh, la, qatar, ngi, eh, taal, eh, budget. Mah, gamitir, mral, me, qatar, ngi, eh, taal, budget. Akmal, go, eh, president, eh, sel, oba, eh, a page fourteen, eh, tal, gamitir report. Eh, ah, gamitir, amle, qatra, ah, budget, eh, executive runs, eh, from seventy million, three hundred eighty seven thousand, eh, mo, sixty million, two hundred thirty two thousand, eh, me, qatra, ten point one million. Mang um, bal, go, lak, mul, ah, say, mal, clo, eh, qat. Sel, nga, eh, front page, eh, newspaper, eh, ma, sing, mal, kador, malo, les, ah, mlo, tal, budget, eh, mral. Um, sub- edel, eh, ma, sing, mral, ta, goi. Ah, gamitir, diregal, me, qatra, sel, eh, one point, eh, three million, eh, state, block grant. Eh, mo, aigil, state government, um, bal, go, eh, ma, say, eh, state government, eh, de, ah, sub- edel, increase, eh, sel, ten percent. Eh, salary increase, eh, nga, eh, sel, eh, R P P L, eh, twelve, eh, eleven, thus, forty. Beto, kabl, eh, qat, eh, gal, beq, eh, board, ma, commission, sa, bl, qat. Eh, and the, sel, mal sel, mal, goa, concern, eh, nga, eh, ngar, sel, um page forty three. Page forty three, eh, adilera, implementation, eh, ah. Me, amend, eh, R P P L, thus, forty. Sel, R P P L, thus, forty, eh, section six, eh, eh, mul, ah, say, eh, morning, eh, ten percent, eh, salary increase, eh, amend, eh, ah. A page scale, eh, ah, government, eh, increase, eh, ngi, eh, ten percent. Ah, bl, amend, eh, ngi, eh, di, le, eh, ngi, eh, mo, October one, twenty twenty six. And the, at the same time, eh, eh, mister president, eh, was, eh, morning, eh, ten percent, eh, cost of living, eh, adjustment. Di, tal, ten percent, eh, cost of living adjustment, eh, para, de, ah, blaktaq, lau, do, eh, was, eh, nga, gire, eh, funding, eh, morning. At the same time, eh, beto, eh, employees, eh, lo, lo, top, eh, eh, sel, oba, eh, page forty four. Eh, employees, eh, legislative, ma judicial branches, eh, de, ah, bul, receive, ah, cost of living adjustment. Ah, on, eh, eh, tira, eh, contract, eh, ma eh, exempt employees, eh, musu, eh, ah, oh, am, aim, eh, tel, eh, la, eh, mora, ba, ba, de, ah, bul, receive, eh, adjustment. But, tira, eh, rogu, eh, grand funded employees, ma foreign and non-resident contract, ma exempt employees. Ah, de, eh, de, ah, Elizabeth, eh, mortal, cost of living adjustment. Eh, president, eh, te, agida, ah, ul, ma, omerang, eh, was, eh, gire, ngari, eh, salary increase. Ah, ul, na, ul, merang, eh, was, eh, nga, eh, gire, ngari, eh, salary, salary increase, eh. Eh, se, eh, gamitir, ah, away, sa, means, ah, omerang, eh, was, eh, eh, ndi, ah, tong, la, eh, government. Man, ndi, ah, to, mestr, eh, ou, du, bi, eh, ader, mo, clo. Ding, amal, de, omerang, eh, sel, eh, sel, domes, eh, eh, economy, re, bela. Eh, guk, cora, god, abli, ngel, ah, ul, masera, lo, lo, ru, eh, tal, tax. Eh, and di, eh, li, eh, P T S, til, mo, sub- edel, mal, eh, ngi, eh, report. Ma, da, clo, sa, aigil, eh, morsel, eh, tax system. Le, eh, G D P, eh, ablu, re, bela, eh, four hundred, eh, three hundred, eh, forty million. Abli, eh, mo, tablo. Ngari, eh, eh, economy, eh, ader, bela, palahous, palahous, eh, economy. Ma, economy, eh, tourist. Eh, economy, eh, tourist, eh, angua, eh, clo, eh, taal, geisai. Economy, eh, tourist, eh, ah, nga, eh, two hundred, eh, forty million, eh, al, mo. Eh, economy, eh, ader, bela, eh, di, hundred million. President, ma, ul, mengi, eh, da, lospe, eh, eh, tax system, eh, mo, sub- edel, eh, angua, enough, eh, tax, eh, taal, tourist, economy. Eh, ul, me, gut, ma, kli, eh, bel, wa. Le, agid, eh, mal, ah, omi, meri, grar, eh, la. Eh, omera, eh, ra, su, eh, mral, eh. Kadu, mang, mo, kert, taal, bel, ur, gire, eh, taal, tourist, economy, sel, eh, eh, mengar, gair. Ta, mengar, mengar, gair, eh, clo, eh, taal, qar, gar, ngel, taal, geisai, eh, agid, eh, bel, bela. Eh, ah, ader, bela, de, ah, sel, eh, mo, benefit, eh, from this tourist, economy. Al, su, go, man, de, ah, ngar, ba, ba, minimum wage. And di, eh, al, de, ah, sel, eh, benefit, eh, ndi, ah, ut, ru, le, eh, mo, taal, tourist, economy. Agid, eh, di kadu, di, oh, eh, ndang, eh, taal, tourist, economy. Ma, da, go, eh, ghi, va, tax system, eh, may, eh, agid, eh, eh, baby, eh, ah, qar, gar, ngel, taal, tourist, economy, eh, agid, eh, da, la, blo, mestr, eh, ader, bela. Le, ta, bel, wa. Mang, girel, ngari, eh, qar, qar, ngel, a geisai, eh, to, go, eh, ul, mestr, eh, ader, bela, ul, mengi, eh, merba, ba, du, bi, eh, ader, bela. Mang, ah, sel, guk, economic model, omerang, eh, chairman, eh, mul, ah, say, eh, la, tong, la, eh, government? No, gang, omerang, say. Sel, eh, mo, su, bra, tax system, eh, ta, agid, eh, eh, bing, eh, la, economy, gire, eh, da, lo, mes, eh, ngi, le, taal, tourist, economy, dim, ral, mo, clo. Eh, economy, eh, ader, bela, dim, ral, mo, ki, kare, eh, kadu, di, maluk, eh, merai. Ndika, shiwa, eh, agid, eh, mengar, gair, eh, taal, tourist, economy. Mang, nga, ta, abi, ngi, la, a geisai, eh, agid, eh, de, ah, the, service oriented tourist, economy. Ah, ul, mengi, eh, guk, morning, eh, baby, eh, industry, but, I'm not gonna go into, eh, to that. And ding, say, agid, eh, omerang, eh, eh, mal, convinced, eh, mul, ah, say, eh, projection, eh, executive runs. Ah, ultuira, economist, eh, eh, nga, eh, finance, eh, musu, bay, eh, lo, ur. Ultuira, eh, beq, eh, other, finance, lo, mes, eh, eh, lo, ur, eh, beq, eh, seals. Mang, based, eh, collection, eh, sub- edel, was, eh, kadu, rich, eh, eighty eight million. Ndika, bal, go, ul, do, ba, me, eighty million, eh, president. Um, su la, eh, ra, eh, leg, eh, say, agid, eh, ul, man, de, ah, senator, gamitir report, eh, disagree, eh, eh, guk, eh, guk gira, eh, disagree, ma, disagree. With all due respect, eh, ma, chairman, ma, gamitir, ogid, su la, eh, mister president.
Su la, eh, senator, eh, Inavo. Senator, Ludiv.
Mister president, eh, ma, ma, sa, eh, taal, eh, ma, sa, eh, taq, senator, eh, rogu, bay, Inavo, eh, ta, gini. Mister president, eh, ta, ngak, ah, direct, eh, mar, ngi, tral, beq, eh, ah, da, sel, bodu, me, mo, kala, eh, du, eh, ol, tab, ra, lulu, du, swela, eh, gire, eh, tal, to, goa, a geisai, eh, ngi, gire, eh, la, say. Mister president, eh, sel, to, goa, F A L, eh, lo, go, eh, ngi, atraq, eh, senator, Inavo, nga, gamitir report. Aigil, guk, osni, eh, la, eh, at, at, to, go, eh, ul. Ah, one, eh, president, eh, ma, gamitir, ah, ma, mes, eh, te, agi, te, eh, conservative approach, ma, cautious approach. Le, ngari, eh, tu, man, kadu, ra, la, to, go, eh, mister president, eh, na, mon, si, bela, eh, de, ah, kan, gotmo, eh, mal, mu, tral, eh, la, ansin. Ah, one, eh, cash flow, A D B, cash flow. Eh, quarter, air, eh, sanitation project, eh, eh, and di, K, S P, eh, di, bus, air, eh. Kadu, blans, eh, ngi, eh, lu, eh, mad, eh, ngi, eh, million. Number two, eh, taal, solar, I P P. De, mul, ah, say, eh, kadu, to, ru, eh, tal, bela, fourteen point, fourteen, two, five cents, eh, kilowatt. Eh, de, ah, ta, mal, beli, eh, ala, de, gire, ah, du, taal, belu. Ah, one, eh, kadu, mo, amend, eh, sel, to, go, eh, pi, wa. Aigil, eh, to, go, eh, mister president. Mang, eh, in hindsight, eh, sel, obom, eh, to, gamitir, report, eh, was, eh, E H, eh, ah, director, eh, aw, blakataq, lo, ah, say. Because, eh, gal, management, eh, eh, gal, kadu, la, project, eh, ablu, re, bela, eh, eh, bela, eh, de, eh, muses, eh, iba, sa, eh, eh, gal, blans. Oba, eh, gamitir, report, eh, mister president. And direct, ngani, eh, disclaimer, eh, eh, page three, I hope, ah, madam, senator, eh, correct, eh, eh, projections, eh, editorial. Is, eh, oba, eh, param, page, eh, page three, ngani, eh, foot, no, eh, tu, say. Limited, eh, information, on, do, la, eh, agid, projections, eh, de, eh, to, go, eh. And so, ngani, eh, eh, information, eh, receive, eh, gamitir, ah, eh, to, mal, eh, aigil, guk, osni, eh, tal, gamitir, ah, eh, agid, projections, eh, ngi. Because of the lack of information, eh, you, to, the conservative, eh, estimate. And il, ah, de, ngi, eh, mister president, eh, taal, clo, eh, la, system, eh, ablu, re, bela, eh, ngani, eh, mechanism, eh, ngi, eh, swela, eh, mora, supplemental. Li, eh, du, mora, reprogramming, eh, li, eh, du, mora, cyclical reserve, eh, balance, eh, ablu. And let's hope, eh, de, ah, sal, mo, volatile, economy, eh, mal, to, mal, eh, om, ri, eh, tax, eh, sel, to, go, eh, kang, go, dang, eh, lo, go, eh, ngi. Eh, de, ah, ngani, mister president, eh, de, ah, am, ah, sis, male, eh, la, du, du, mora, government, eh, ma, ader, ah, no, eh, giri, eh, mo, mde, ngi. Ma, di, eh, pact, eh, fixed, eh, twenty years, eh, gal, eh, mal, mering, eh, lo, ul. Gire, eh, lo, tirak, lo, di, eh, report, eh, aigil, to, go, eh, tax, eh, aigil, bes, eh, da, iski, eh, ma, mi, minister, eh, pos, eh, eh, mra, du, yo. Ah, P T S, eh, ah, clo, eh, ngi, eh, lo, ri, eh, ngi, eh, ader, ah, blu, eh, ma, um, tu, bedo, eh, ra, ndal, eh, tal, ol, bi, eh. Eh, la, ol, tak, eh, tinta, eh, ngi, eh, ma, eh, ta, eh, bes, su la, eh, da, la, mo, kler. Eh, domes, eh, to, go, eh, kang, go, dang, eh, de, ah, gal, pick up, eh, mora, pick, oh, be, eh. Eh, ta, eh, aigil, eh, reality, eh, ga, fact, eh, mister president, eh, de, ah, bl, rose, eh. Ma, to, eh, um, su la, eh, nga, eh, agid, eh, gamet, eh, senator, eh, di, eh, mal, per, to, go, eh, taq, eh, nga, gamitir, report, eh, su la, mister president.
Senator, Corti.
Su la, eh, mister president, eh, mal, un, eh, li, ta, sil, sil, eh, go, eh. Nisa, eh, gamitir, report, eh, with reservation. So, eh, the, V C, eh, gamitir, report, eh, morsel, page, eh, four oh, forty six. President, mari, eh, guk, eh, baby, eh, policy, disagree, eh, guk, eh, ah, god, ah, dosweh, eh, and di sel, go, eh, na, guk, di, eh, gamet, eh, de, eh, commentary. Di, sel, obor, sel, third, par, Robert, eh, 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 del, page four. Maria, tul, to, eh, ngari. Ned, om, ok, la, director, eh, budget. President, eh, di, eh, ned, om, ok, ro, si, si, meeting. Eh, mul, agid, eh, was, eh, eh, ah, ah, do, eh, nga, eh, cyclical reserve fund, eh, eight million. Se, nga, eh, record, eh, mal, sum, eh, de, ah, ah, da, om, de, ngi, eh, sel, um, sel, audio, record, eh, me, or, eh, say. Se, mild, dong, eh, August, eh, fifth, eh. Then, eh, agida, eh, ngilo, Bavier, eh, well, recently, eh, project, eh, was, eh, osi, si, ul, fund, eh, ah, nga, eh, twenty five point five million. And de, eh, eh, san, eh, ngi, eh, president. Mari, sel, lo, eh, was, eh, sum, la, san, eh, ngi, eh, president, eh, mo, omer. Le, president, eh, will, probably. Ndika, mal, ka, mos, eh, to, go, eh, ah, ak, tong, clo, eh, difference, eh, eight million, ma, twenty five. Ndiga malkakos, etogor, akung klo difference, ra 8 million, ma 25.5 million. Aktuli seke da, Mr. President, le, kada idara budget. Hmm, dimnakal mangaya, namini ra President. Malal, submit, ra, apesel, ak, melbongiya Minister of Finance, malakad, idara next, sa dra budget. Se a reservation. A'ul ngirung, Mr. President, tamor, osisi, paragraf, eh, public auditor, di ra rule, la, malal. Emnamdung, tel, la, before, wasing, malal, olbi ra kalulaw. Akumda sa effort, olbi ra kalulaw, fund, eh, ma udod, mora, Minister of Finance, egal, la, umraal government, eh, ma sa, ngi, teke da, sa ngi, mar marala. Anfehren statement. Ndidi, Mr. President, as responsible, at, eng, el kaabos, egal number, el, a, audit report, ngar nyas, anybody, mengalorala, udod, in their right mind. Ndiakal, pir, el ngua conservative, le oboravange, el, a, monolia balance, ga, tablo. Ndiakamitise, kere, mongi, wasa, kahalilu, tel rebalance, se isalo, se ngi, madel. Se gidha reservation, ah, god, eh, kuli, tel wasay, the, submit, ra, kela, apesel minister, sumse, a consensus, edu mu, le ngarele, tial republic. Eh, ongerung, eh, sum, auditora, diya, sel uli aurior, edi siga mechanism, el mormulegal urior. Le te ay gidatali, du member, di misadra osisiu, eto we. Se amne reservation, ah, tial budget, eh, Mr. President. Nga dekad, audo, maguspe anges, ra adel, mo, esperan, number, wasay, awan, awan, eh, atu, atu. Ndidi difference, 25.5 by 8 million, ngal, ndiakudina, number, amde, waset, te awanay. Omem, sulangye, Mr. President.
Sulangye, Senator Cortey. Senator Tabloal.
Se President Awamsooratial, eh, ma, tral sil reklada. A'ut, eh, me, gurangaswalela, chairman, ra, vedel, ma, Floride, ba, chairman reklada, ngadi, egan, dosa, da, ma, na, damdangala, du, du, noti, blogora, gayal, ndi, me, gaswalela, reklada, tial domes, ngi, a, taitan, gidadi la, utmukin. Penser, kokpiligi, ngiretial, report, eh, god, eh, gidian, rapajet. Siladoma pajet, ekubun, sera pajet, el, gama, ta, ura vedel, ngirela, di, obisra kabalment. Me, gusre, reklada, kado notna, wasa, kamibai, bo, domes, tial pajet, eh, domes, omswalela, belaw. Magra, domes, tial omswalela, eh, do, ra, la, anges, el mora, a, tirangala, blu, uspe. Se, a, pladakmukin. A'ut, el, kumulangasaw, ser, ngiretial anges, el mora, head start. Ngi kere, tokoy, ndi, ngaria, ralim, mora, sense, ra head start, el mu, guutmuk, tirangalge, tiruspe. Se, tulto. O'yerung, se anges, el mora, palaw, nasina, skalasi, hor. Per ministry, le, lo, wasay, mlonnyang, alsa, sel. Magadu, ngarkase, se anges, mortir, ya, report, wasa, oh, ma, kara, artim, etemoqargik, la, lolongar, kawo, mora ngal, ndiakal, ura, sete, tele, ngar, tal. Tokutirador, sel, eh, dosmo, okr tirawedi. Se, l, poktiri, ralal, wasay, ngara, ulmu, ngel, dakargik, eh, domes, a, omswalela, belawe. Eh, kabelaw, di, eh, eh, gel, udod, diakadokem, adiakal, bor. Uduver, yaral, mde, ngiraklu. Di, se, mildong, maqmutin, omre, clean, ngar, tial report, si, page 3. Se, l, August, se, meteng, a'ut, eng, 8 million, se balans, se mildong. Ya 15 days later, eng, 25 million. Etia, udod, ngara, risur, udod, ngara, alcela, omswalela, belaw, ngar, giwar. Tok, magar, ader, domes, a, udod, domes, ra giwar, adiakasil, masaqpa, arus, say. Edo, murati. A, a 70 million, ndiakasil, bangri. Basukum, ndiakasil, guutmuklis, se, omswalela, belaw, albanari. Edo, magar, umrasa, atogor, dosa, da, udod, diakal, diral, wes. Ali, tial, cyclical, a, ngirel, mde, lo, donelira, alcel. Le, ngam, laurora, 711, ndi, ma, meri, akalchins. Edo, mde, ngasim, plus, or minus, ta, telalchins, ra, kesir, ra, betla. Etia, omswanl, belaw. Magara, eh, 70 million, la, donelila, a 15 days, eh, waishay. Ngirel, el mu, gama, tosia, de, sa, wasay, kabod, alelak, le, eh, bodu, ngel, mesegal, wudet, edo, ngar, ngel, ma, gel, ngar, ngirel, morni. El, akadup, taraklo, urior, waishay. Iber, ma, ndiakudina, ower, mde, ngasit, ti, alwi. Ma, tii, du, lisake, wasay, egal, udod, la, kabod, tobeda, la, a, dirisia, dem, todraklu. It is not the end of the world. Edni, klotutirar, adanartian, al, maygal, mondengay, el, mora, mo, lima, er, ader, blaw, dong, oklo, mesas, sel. Ngaratak, ngar, agaril, tial, magusutirar, adanaklu. Se, lospe, ngi, ader, ngiret, ma, ak, pre, naswalela, reklada, eh, klagalus, aguspe, ndi, buhinita, mu, klabes, wasay. Odohes, eh, gel, sipero, kutpok, edo, rolit, tial, marcel, unu, sel, mora, ader, tial, lospe, sulap, President.
Maria, on. Diya, Senator Blairei. Sulay, President, ratelagi. President, aku, takmal, merenga, sulela, atangak, senatorudim, kamitir awaisen min, sa tial, malklo, urior, blanali. Nakadirekal, akle, say, na kamitir report, with reservation. Eh, ndiakal, bigos, ak, kumtokra, arangala, report, mla, ngia, di, kere, tokoy, ma, alsil. Gumbasul, wasing, ngirel, asma, sa, sel, god, ta, eh, chairmanudim, a'ulmar, vector members. Sel, god, ta, mal, purely ignorance of my part, bakmal, ayamak. Ding, se, l, page 27, ra, ak, kamitir report, se, ngire, section 18. Ya, se, appropriation, ra, 1 million, el, mora, infrastructure maintenance fund. Concern of crisis, ngityang, eh, kadala, mora, adalabilak, mo, brura, amendment. Ah, wasing, a road maintenance fund, se, la, create a road maintenance fund, wasing, omitela, udod, a road maintenance fund, eh, gidil, solely for road maintenance. A infrastructure maintenance fund, eh, chairman, la, la, mesay, gel, annual implementation plan, I M F, ra, 24, ma, 20, ndiakal, 25, 26. Hmm, over arts, mora bebirra, infrastructure, ndiakal, klo, lela, ra, ra. Moru hospital, ma, moru school, ma, ma. Ndiak, umesengi, wasing, tabasul, tokoy, al sugum, kodopa, a, taksir, adra, ramliril. El, ngirel, misabak, kerti, ar, role, la, blur belaw, guk, momru, le, gigid, momatsa, gigid, lurioregel, bebirra, sector. Ma, pay umraal, waset, tia, gigid, 1 million, eh, ngirel, mangera, local revenue. Edi, chance, ra source, saringi, mo, ndiakal, ngara, road maintenance fund. A'ul ngirung, eh, chairman, eh, eh, li, manokmata, discussion, ra, ah, egal gidile, se, 10% salary increase. Eh, mla, ngia, ora, mla, ngia, consensus, ra, aulaol, wasikadu, momkaram. Se, mle consensus, l, gudangali. Ah, le, wasikadu, implement, ra 10% salary increase, ra executive branch. Ndidi gidale, se, l, pay scale, mo effective, ra, October, 2026, emsa, tial, lela, a human resource, ma, ministry, ra, X R C T, di, mtaurior, lagutmuklis, se, pay scale. Arumon, se gid, ya, mle consensus, eh, li, eh, kamitir report, a, recommend, wasay, lakad implement, se, 10% increase. Gora, awal, kakos, eng, se gid, mneunderstanding, eh, li, may gigid, a reservation, ah, ke chairman. Ndidi, maka, aklimutin, merenga, sulim, ak, mde ngel, waset, tial, lurior, ah, obrad, lurior. Eh, atay, ma, maral, digyang, ma, egal, adir, gesepi, edel, sma, adalabil. Eh, di, se, ngire, infrastructure maintenance fund, ra, akti, ma, dalaw, aishas, se, kumru, ngil, floor amendment, sulangye, chairman. Senator Mario.
Oh, si Presidente. Ma, kamitlo, lo, main, sin, maldinger, ra chairman, ta, lo, maril, rapajet, eh, eng, mi, gakamakura, taru, ak, konvinced, ngi, alu, ngavai, mi, gakamakuror, le, bengela, lex, brur, ra, tial, rapajet, ngara, 2025, eleven. To, to, di, at, tial, 10% increase, ra, salary, eh, hold, ra, tial, minimum wage. Alu, bagim, ma, ma, merenga, la, egal, ma, ulugol, le, ma, se, ndiak, begulu, orgadup, eret, ilangi. Edo, tel, wungitu, garingi, tial, wungitu, garingi, atrail, akumreita, ilaling. Tial, 10%, el increase, a, ngi, gel, diga, diga, se, senator, bengi. Eh, akak, ulma, tira, kal, nuaklo, amblu, kuasit, tia, ngiret, lor, gadi, a, se, adorur, se, 11 das 40. Ah, chairmanudim, al, sa, bingel, lo, ekor, ka, President, tral, misad, tial, wasay, tian, ader, tian, ader, ader, li. Edto, menli, tial, pay scale, kabalment, guk, momringa, begitu. Mang, se gid, abon, waishet, tokoy, madu, adad, kuasit, eh, meloray, ledi, ed, ed, adu, ra, irado, final, final, finalize, tial, report. Gademla, akaril, wasa, kado, gadi, se gid, se, 10% el increase, ader, li, mo, okola. Anding, el, arrak, di, se, mo, 10% el, eh, increase, ra, udod, iranada, mo, ngire, se, stadil, mo, gutmuk. A'ul, mo, implement, saringi, ra, 2026. Mang, akumbas, na, akora, di, la, omre, se, le, chairman, magabu, di, omre, se, wasa, se, dak, gorod, begitu, garingi. Se gid, amnitsun, wasa, kada, mora, okola. Kado, mora, okola, eh, ing, ruli, se gid, pay scale, ma, se, ummas, se, se, ruli, se gid, pay scale, ngia, adrikal, amu, decision, ra, tial, government, wasay, mo, kara, increase, ra. Ah, ader, government, le, se gid, a'ul, mo, tiakadong, itu, wasa, se, pay scale, momru, ra stadil, eh, eh, gel, increase, uliawu, eh, awal, tial, menli, te gid, pay scale. Ma, tial, 10%, talba, mongel, mo, utu, man, mangal, to, menli. A'ul, magadu, wasay, men, drelil, di, kola, eh, di, se, l, wagol, adjustment, audodira, adabon, after, ra, moru, se, stadil. A'ul, mas, se gid, a, a, gid, rul, mo, isegid, le. A'ul, we, nga, kadi, aksal, mityan, dikmengil, wasay, akal, lela, be, la, ngam, nar, a, finance, etogowa, ulwate, gigid, togora, pay scale, nam, la, te, telel, nding. Mang, a'ul, mas, se gid, akogora, mna, adu, ngirel, wasay, mo, okolan, di, se, l, le, moru, se gid, pay scale, we, giram, u, decide, wasay, mo, kara, ta, le, telel. Di, se, 10%, talwa, duk, wasay, ngirel, ngar, adel, nor, a, increase, audodir, se, mo, okolan, mora, ra. Okolan, mora, aden, ding, mutaxse, bol, opert, tial, salary. Hmm, se gid, akora, adi, du, lisegid, eh, akumbas, wasay, mdirek, tial, tokora, meni, u, we, se, magtira, mal, ne, meni, wasay, dor, gadi. Ndidi, after, eh, bidale, implementation, le, after, adadu, maygal, discussion, le, gid, akogora, mon, mon, wasay. Ngar ngi, a'ul, gaso, si, eh, meloray, le, gid, olbi, ra, kalulaw, bol, se, l, domes, a, eh, gel, guk, mes, l, mos, l, ngaseva, egal, me, kere, si, obay. Malakbol, l, mutrob, le, bigos, tial, minimum wage. Etirgal, se, l, hiring, etirgal, me, kere, kumbalim, le, ra, hiring, a'ul, mas, se, petition, le, tir. Wasay, mde, ler, tial, implementation, tial, minimum wage, ra, private sector, old, old, ma, 2028. Ma, kukra, di, old, ma, ta, 2028, ngar, se, eleksion, hir, ma, se, l, por, se gid, time, ma, political, tial, minimum wage. Ma, wasay, mldong, old, 29. Ndidi, te gid, se, a, kupala, du, ra, discussion, tial, report, kado, nor, mo, decide, wasay, eh, men, de, de, lora, eh. Ndidi, olbi, ra, kalulaw, bol, domes, eh, gel, guk, se, l, gutmuk, l, wagol, ol, lolngaseva, egal, me, kere, si, obay, malakbol, tal, magurusi, a, l, tial, si, obay, ke. Wa, dige gid, eh, chairman, alsum, gorora, se, lolgorengi, a, ma, la, la, iret, te gid, li, gera. A'ul, ngiru, atay, Presidente, tial, se, togora, se, matsing, tial, infrastructure maintenance. Se, one, se, 1 million, a, tok, ra, rapajet, ra, blur belaw, momatsa, se, sing, 5 million, tial, maintenance, maintenance fund. Oh, mte, se, le, bang, eh, ngua, dibon, mora, se gid, ma, ummas, eh, gel, l, maintenance fund, dal, adiakal, dilabora, eh, na, dirakal, sebe, el mora. Gadi, kal, domes, se gid, le, tian, a'udod, belaw, momatsa, ra, tial, maintenance fund, maintenance fund, nam, eh, gel, eh, gel, project, l, lorurula, a, kabalment, ra, blir fund, a kabalment, ra, bingel. Se gid, adomes, saringi, tral, akast, tial, project.
Mongiam. Senator, Romosaw. Sulangye. Oh, eh, ali, bak, sate, lela, Senator Blairei, mal, longer, sel, dorira, Senator, Mario, eh, le, gorvag, Senator Blairei.
Sulay, Presidente, Floride, se, l, se, tiki, ngela, ah, matsing, fund, ra, a, tial, infrastructure maintenance fund, requirement, ra, blur, ambe, gel, wasay, ngiret, tial, million. Se, l, dirgal, 2 million, a, infrastructure maintenance fund, eh, le, ne, doripresenta, matsingi. Le, elor, mldart, tial, la. Ndidi, mla, a, agency, kabalment, eh, madim, eh, gilingel, matsa, segid, eh, uspe, se, l. Edi, mnetal, M P I I, te gid, a road maintenance fund, amla, ngi, te gid, lududel, appropriation, olbi, le, ma, 680,000, med, annually. Maygi, ngua, 600,000, eng, matsa, ni, ngel, 2 million. Eng, ngel, 2 million, eng, mo, udod, l, lolngse, l, tial, compact road, maygal, r, public road, sa, blu, belo. Amlo, isiu, wasa, se, la, 2024. Eh, 2023, udod, ra, 2023, implement, ra, 2024, etu, ngua, a, 2 million, ra, infrastructure maintenance fund, plus, ra, 600,000, du, da, road maintenance fund. El, ngu, l, mor, moru school, moru education, moru hospital. Mang, wa, di, ngilo, a'udod, ra, road maintenance fund, l, momru, la, diakal, uror, aral. Mang, se gid, a, awal, concern, a, kalu, gori, tian, alusay. Ah, infrastructure maintenance fund, ra, compact review agreement. Ah, mal, tokol, sector, alu, gori, ndiakadi, ra. Se, l, mo, mususeng, a school, se, l, mususeng, a hospital, se, l, mususeng, a, blakalus. Ngigel, ngigel, nga, se, agreement, wasing, ngirel, mora, education, ma, security, ma, climate change, ma, ramara. Mang, se, l, d, 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 lia, source, saringi, mo, wasay, mo, source, tial, 1 million, a, road use tax, ma, road maintenance fund. Anyway, te, te, ga, di, wan, tokoy, di, go, mengli, te, di, wan, du. Emblu, wasa, se gid, a, a, osasi, tial, 5 million, l, udod, ra, me, gel, eh, ngirel, dimorara. Ma, umraal, wasa, se, se, 1 million, el matsing, eh, ngirel, tobedel, eh, diakal, strings, attack, stringi, l, udod, l, mong. Mang, sebe, la, bekel, sector, bekel, ministry, lospe, ngi. Se gid, a, point, o, liktal, bl, bl, gorengi, eh, che, sulang.
Senator Mario.
Oh, diak, gor, ngungia, akumbas, in, ra, lobor, mo, sandi, sokal, dirakal, a, ulma, kamet, se, akti, wasay. Bol, sebe, edel, domes, ri, man, sebe, la, ba, amend, tial, tial, tax, el mora, ra, eh, da, amend, ri, wasay, sebe, el mora, eh, ni, project, bol, sebe, dirakal. Mo, bengel, tial, infrastructure maintenance fund, eh, du, ngu, l, mulai, eh, guk, ngirel, belaw. El, a, guk, podo, tobeda, ngi, ra, local revenue, tian, am, old, mora, eh, dirakal, guk, son, sa, local revenue, se gid, el, a, podo. Ulma, kasedit, amend, se, l, ula, te gid, tax, te gid, a road use tax. El mora, eh, ni, maintenance, ra, project, ra, blur, belaw. Le gidet, tial, gidha, diakadu, doval, ngar, ra, el, a, el, a, ngar, eh, gigid, l, udod, ra, egal, med, matsa, ngu, l, momru, la, ya, ra, el, ma, bebirra. Project, mobile, adi, center, se gid, a, source, te gid, a, road use tax, l, mo, sebe, edel, diakadil, gor, ra, ra, mora, bebirra. Akadi, se, di, du, lisegid, eh, ma, se, doval, adalabil, du, tumovil, adu, ngi. Sulay, Presidente.
Senator Mosom.
Sulay, Presidente, ratal, eh, direktal, mal, join, arbekl, ade, merenga, sulela, chairman, ra, ya, kamitir report. And, Mr. Presidente, nga, ma, tira, kal, mesai, ngal, labangela, W R. Se, W R, eh, Mr. President, ta, a, aishas, wasa, le, me, laol. Le, me, laol, eh, say, na, tial, report, na, udon, tial, bebirra, aden, di, nga, kamran, le, me, laol. Atsum, ma, chairman, ra kamitia, malu, usel, wasay, ndiakal, sal, blakatak, la, egal, information, aldo, lap, eh, magatmoqart, yang. Eh, akme, laol, la, say, na, kamitir report, la, lap, a, ndiakal, blakatak, information. Ndidi, kado, merenga, sulel, he did with what he had, eh, lagutmakli, tial, urior, magal, albanari, ngirela. Mr. President, direktal, bengela, wasa, se, ra, November 18, ra, 2021. Nga, den, le, pas, ra, R P P L 11 das 13, el, dam, bodong, ngil, kong, ah, de, ah, fiscal responsibility and debt management act. Eh, te, eh, Presidente, se, ado, meeting, labangela, daitorio, blur, belaw. Kado, mklak, karingil, wasay, tian, a, mande, tra, Presidente, ngirel, issue, rawal, fiscal strategy.
If I'm wrong, the chairman, I'm not going to explain. The president, I think I am not chairman, not chairman, am not vice senator. I don't think I can cancel the case of the 12th or other bill, with the election. No. I'm not thinking, Senator Monsao. I can cancel the trial or other thing. I don't think I can accept it. I don't think I can accept it. I don't think I can accept it. I'm not going to delay the meeting. I'm not going to delay the reading. I'm going to delay amendment for the floor. I'm not going to delay the increase. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. Mr. President, I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. 799 dollars. A plumber makes 10 dollars. So, I don't think I can delay. Because I don't think I can delay. 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 Because I don't think I can delay. 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 So, Mr. President, I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. The president, I'm not going to delay. And I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. Mr. President. I'm sorry.
Senator Pedro. Senator Sunino.
Mr. President. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. Chairman Raul is going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. With reservation. I'm not going to delay. 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 I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. Private sector. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. For 25. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. Family is my girl. My life. Life is my dream. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. Because I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. Meaning, I'm not going to delay. 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 I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can 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 delay. I'm not going to delay. Per year, tax. Tax. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. Tax office. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. More than 50,000. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. 50,000 to 300,000. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can 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 delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. 50,000. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to 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 delay. Household. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to 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 delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can 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 delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can 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 delay. Start. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. Before, I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to 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 delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to 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 delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can 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 delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. 1,000. I don't think I can delay. 100 dollars. By five years. I'm not going to delay. 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 I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to 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 delay. Making profits. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. Put in amendment. I don't think I can delay. 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 I'm not going to delay.
Senator Sunino. Senator Vasilius.
President, I'm not going to delay. 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 I don't think I can 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 delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. Implementation. I don't think I can delay. 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 I'm not going to delay. Of course, I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. The committee report. My decision. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. Although, I'm not going to delay. Scholarship. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. Ministry. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. 480. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. Pedro. I don't think I can delay. Although, I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to 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 delay. Of course, I can delay. But I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. Compromise. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. President, I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. 480. I don't think I can delay. 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 I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. One. I don't think I can delay. Among cost of living. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. At least, I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay.
Senator Nakamura.
President, I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. Chairman and vice chairman. Committee. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. Concern. I don't think I can delay. Personally, I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can 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 delay. I'm not going to delay. Committee. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. Although, I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. Lower revenue. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. 80,000. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I provide finance. Executive branch. I'm not going to delay. PGST. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can 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 delay. Third quarter. In the report. I accumulate 28 million. I say 28 million 874,000. Total PGST. December, I'm not going to delay. I accumulate 28 million. 2 million. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. Value. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. Storm. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. Information. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. Budget. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. Committee. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay.
Senator Nakamura. Do you want? Do you want? I'm not going to delay. But I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. Committee. I'm not going to delay. 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 We have to agree on something. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. Discussion. Debate. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. PGST. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. Pension. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to 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 delay. PGST. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. But I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to 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 delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. Committee. I don't think I can delay. Standing Committee. 12,42. Today. On top. Committee. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. Floor leader. Do you want? Sir Prises. Sir Prises. I'm not going to delay. Floor leader.
President, I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. Order of the day. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. Air. First reading. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. Hospital. 12,23,3. Institute. ST1. FY2026. United 5%.
I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. Clear.
Hospital number 2,23,3. HD2, ST1. Will for now to enact a budget law for fiscal year 2026 to the destination of the sum of 147,207,560 and appropriation of the amount of 147,207,560 from the National Treasury for the annual channel operations, special revenue and debt services budget of the Republic of Palau for the fiscal year ending September 2026. The hospital, I'm not going to delay. 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 I don't think I can delay. My special revenue. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. September 2026. I'm not going to delay. I'm sorry.
I don't think I can delay. 2026. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. Committee. I'm not going to delay. 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 Senator Inavo.
President, this is what I'm concerned about. Section 77. Page 79. The bill, the SD2. Take it. The review of tax exemptions. I don't think I can delay. Within 30 days of the date of this act, the Bureau of Revenue and Taxation shall deliver to the Office of the Attorney General and the Office of the Special Prosecutor, a list of all tax exemptions granted to for-profit entities that are current or that were utilized within the past four years, four taxable years. The Bureau of Revenue and Taxation shall provide these offices with any supplemental documentation requested, notwithstanding RPL 11,11 within the Okay, anyway. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. Tax exemption. Government. I'm not going to delay. I'm I don't think I can delay. Minister of Finance. I'm not going to report. I'm not going to be Attorney General. I'm not going to be Special Prosecutor. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. Tax exemption. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. Solar Farm. I'm not legal. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. I'm not going to delay. Last four years. Before. The former Minister of Finance. El Bull Sadaam. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can delay. Or 12 years. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I'm not going to delay. I don't think I can request. I'm not going to delay. 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 12 years. I don't think I can delay. Issue. Right to privacy.